Hello you guys. Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Wolf called, Chisman.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Jerry Van Dorn.
Present.
Coke.
Present.
Kimberly Van Dorn.
Present.
And accounted for. I will take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion by Chisman.
I'll second that.
Second by Coke. All in favor? I will also entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll make that motion also to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Chisman.
I'll second that.
Second by Kimberly Van Dorn. All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor's report. We have just a few touch points.
Sorry about that.
That I want to kind of, oh, you're all right Judy. Couple things I want to just kind of let everybody know about. August 26th, I had our court date on 305 East State Street, which is a property that we've been working on, deemed it a dangerous dwelling there a little over a year ago. Went to court and our attorney was under the impression it would be not contested and they would hand the property over to us. When we got there, one or two co-executors of the estate decided that they wanted to contest it. So now, we go to court on January 9th for a trial. I will give you guys more details when I get them, when I find out what that entails. So, that's where we are on that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
We as a city are paying an attorney to defend us in this matter, correct? And what is the hourly rate on that?
Seventy-five maybe?
Seventy, yeah.
That's quite reasonable.
I just want anybody that watches this to know it's costing us seventy-five dollars an hour to fight someone about a property that's falling down.
And I guess we'll find out more in court when we get there. Also, as kind of along the same lines, Steve Bond is feeling better, which is number one, a good thing. He wasn't able to make it last month. He is coming back for the second round of inspections on some other properties in town September 25th. So, Steve's feeling better, going to be around. What's affectionately known by some as the Blakesburg World's Fair, the Blakesburg Corn Carnival will be in town September 20th through the 22nd. Yep, Sean's over there nodding his head, he's in approval of that one. So, just everybody, asking everybody to kind of be safe and be watching out for the influx of traffic that will happen in town that weekend and a lot of extra bodies, lots of kids running around, so try to keep everything safe. September 19th is the cutoff date for council and mayor papers to be turned in. Anybody interested in running, have till that date to get your signatures together and have them turned in to City Hall, to Iowa. Yep, and I think that's all I have. Just a side note, I ran into Eddie Bill's city clerk there and they have no one that has taken out papers for any of their council seats or their mayor's seat for the coming election. So, their clerk was kind of in that. She was, so we'd like to not be in that same boat. So, anybody that knows anybody that is interested in running, please get out there and...
Can I say something about the potential for writing in? There's a potential, I've talked to Iowa called Secretary of State, I can. I've talked to Danielle, I've talked to League of Cities. Bottom line, if there's no papers out, and that's not saying they wouldn't be beat by a write-in. A write-in candidate can take the seat with one or two votes. Unless there's a felony or something there stopping them from sitting. So, it's, I know a lot of people think it's funny, but it's not. So, I'd urge anybody, if they write anybody in, make damn sure somebody don't want to be sitting here.
Alright, so, that's all I have for this month. We will hand it over to Marty. From Marty, the chief deputy is in town, give us the sheriff's report.
It's kind of been a busy summer again. I was talking with some people before the meeting started. It seems like I talk about our pain night thing every time I come, so I'll talk about it again. The guys go up tomorrow to pick up their dogs, so they get just shy of two weeks to bond with them before they actually go up for training. That's the 23rd of September and they'll be gone six weeks to do that. Other than that, it's just been putting out fires, figuratively, you know, just one thing to the next and trying to keep that.
Alright.
If you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Marty tonight, guys?
Yeah, I don't.
I think we're good then. So, thank you Marty for coming down, appreciate it. We're going to move on to our emergency management coordinator for Waukato County, Mr. Tim Richmond. Hi Tim.
Howdy. I know, were you able to make copies? I brought some too if you were. So hello, some new faces since I've been here last, it's been since last fall that I was here. So, I'm the director of your countywide emergency management agency. And just to take a brief minute to maybe bring you up to speed for somebody that I haven't talked to, could pull up this paper that's in your packet, we'll talk about that first.
Any one?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I brought extras.
Yeah, I think I did.
Any one?
I probably have one in here, just want to see.
You found it?
Yeah.
Well, you could have had a colored one.
I'll direct you to that graphic that's on this page, it talks about what I'm here to talk about. We'll talk about emergency management as a overall. So, there's four phases in emergency management. Mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery. And as you watch the national news and the national scene, especially right now with the hurricanes going on, you see some of those types of things in motion as you do commonly in coastal states dealing with hurricanes. Take that kind of thing and bring it to Iowa. We don't deal with hurricanes and those mass destructive events quite as often, but we do deal with things like tornadoes and floods. Flood was our thing this year, as we've dealt with that more and more in recent decades. High wind events, things like that. So, what we need to do as leaders of the community is plan for those events and do what we can to lessen their impact. And the reason for that, the better we are at planning ahead of time and responding efficiently is it reduce the cost and impact to our cities and to our residents. And that can be very basic, as things like just a simple debris management. We've seen that in recent months with storms that go through. It seems like the last two years, the storms have hit Blakesburg pretty hard and it seems to hit the western side of the county, that's the cycle we're in now. You know, maybe a year or two it'll shift and pick on the other side of the county, who knows? But we've had those kinds of events. So, what is mitigation? Mitigation is anything we can do to our public infrastructure, to harden our infrastructure, to make it less susceptible to those types of damages. And the ability to get some funds, or I should say, the funds are more geared toward natural disasters. There's all kinds of things we can mitigate against, there's all kinds of hazards as we deal with all hazards. So, there's things like terror attacks and cyber attacks and things like that, but hazard mitigation funds generally focus on natural disasters. And the reason for that is, one, they're the most common, and two, they're the most costly. So, what are some types of things that typically get funded or looked at for those types of hardening projects? I'll give you just kind of a brief rundown of what the current priorities are. Number one priority is property acquisitions for like floodplains. We don't have that problem in Blakesburg since you're the highest elevation in the county. Electric utility hardening, so lets if you run a public utility, which you don't. Detention basins, if you have lots of trouble with flooding, warning sirens, and that's something specifically I want to talk to you about here in Blakesburg. Priority two is to elevate and protect wastewater lift stations and to have backup generators. And priority three is tornado safe rooms and small flood barriers. So, a tornado safe room might come into a conversation, especially our elementary school here. I've done some planning with the school district to kind of change how we respond to tornadoes and where we put kids within the building. But those are, those are the types of projects that we think of when we talk about hazard mitigation. So, the planning process has changed a little bit, that's what I want to talk to you folks about tonight. So, every five years we have to certify a hazard mitigation plan countywide for all jurisdictions. That has been quite the cumbersome process in the past. The last go-around was almost a disaster in itself, just the way it went down. So, we didn't want to repeat that ugliness. In the past, we had applied for grant funds to fund this project and seventy-five percent of the time was spent meeting the requirements of the grant rather than doing any real work. And so I said, can we not do that? And so, the commission worked on this process with the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission, our council of governments, because planning is what they do, and come up with a different idea on how to approach hazard mitigation planning. So, instead of doing this once every five years and making this nice pretty little plan, this big binder that nobody looks at, we put on the shelf for five years, we propose a new idea, and that's what's outlined in your, in your handout. We want to make this an annual conversation. So, we do this, and I pay for it as on a subscription type basis. Now, here's the beauty of the whole thing, it comes to costs, so this is paid for by the Emergency Management Commission, and the out-of-pocket costs that we will have with this new concept is exactly the same cost as it was before. Fancy that. And a lot less means, a lot less in-kind match and all this stuff we had to do and paperwork chase and all that. So, how do we get the information, how do we gather it? We're going to try this, we're going to try a simple survey process, which is what's in your packet as well. We'll go through these questions here in a minute. But, we're kind of feeling this out, this is our first year to do this. Initially, we were going to just do a simple online like survey, but then, didn't know how you would respond to that, if that was too, too quick and personal. Sometimes with some priorities, we'll look at some funding opportunities and say, alright, what do we really want to get aggressive about doing? Let's have a product, let's do something. And that may be something where you go for grant funds to actually do. Really would like to see us get an outdoor warning siren for Blakesburg. That's just one idea, that's... But it can also be something as simple as, you know what, let's, as officials, come up with a debris management program so that we're much better in responding to the next storm. It could be that simple. And those things don't cost a lot of money, but they can save us a lot of money. Does that make sense? Any questions about the process? If there's none, let's dig into the questions. The first five questions are pretty straightforward, just kind of demographic. The first real question is number six, and this, and these are things that you can think about and add to later as well. Are there locations in your municipality that have been subject to damage from hazards which have occurred since 2012?
We had storm damage about it, didn't we?
Well, this is where I rely on you guys with local knowledge. The only thing that comes to my mind, it's become a repeat problem, is that section of roads that floods all the time. Right, I could definitely identify that as something on here, because that's a potential project that we could work on.
Main Street, Cass Street. It's kind of low there. And then State Street down here as well, floods right at the bottom of the bridge, kind of...
Hopefully now with that, I just think that got it.
The main drain ain't good. It was my understanding, we had trouble last summer, it was a piece of styrofoam, wasn't it? That's what they dug out there, I think that was, you know, the tunnel come down. And I think...
State Street is a problem you were discussing with the storm things being covered up.
And that's what they've been dug out now.
I mean, I've gone over there and unplugged them and period of time.
The street keeps plugging up with grass, you know, them ditches, that's taking care of itself, but the water stays in the street, it's plugged up all the time. So, I've got ideas on that, which we can address as this, I think, is basically I'd cut the curbs out, make that water go to the ditch, and then put in a raised drain there so the water, you know, grass doesn't cover up those, you know, drain cover that arches up and then around circles. So, basically get the road off the street, into the ditches, and then into them drains. You can't really put those on the road because, you know, car it in.
Right. They're just in each ditch there on the corner?
On each side. If you do that on each side, that curves out, let the water get to the...
We have a tour down through here, I think.
I thought that, I thought that Main Street drain, I thought there was a collapsed tile on that.
Those are the ones, now Mike will wild with us, but nobody upset, Mike was simple. There's these drain tiles back in the cemetery, and they are collapsing.
Those, as far as we know, they're just coming out people's basements and yards. I don't think, I don't know that they come off the street. I think that street fixed itself when we took that styrofoam there on Main Street.
It hasn't been like it used to. It used to be watered, yeah.
But, and this one can be fixed, that amount of the cost, just like I said, but we've already been doing this stuff just by cleaning out the ditches and getting rid of our drainage problems, you know, we've already been helping this. It's just, I don't know if we can get grants, if we could tie grants into that, because we've got the whole town to do that practically.
That's what is interesting here, because we talked about it at the last meeting, we had a study done from 1983 that was kind of got passed around, where they, they had a plan to dig all the ditches out so water would flow where it was supposed to flow and whatnot, and it got kind of floated down. So, that's actually drainage would be, is that something that you guys...
These are all the things you're talking about, write these down, because here's what happens, go on, go forward, we put this in our plan, even if it isn't prioritized, it's in there as a need. And then as different opportunities come along, because you don't always know when they will come along or what, or from what agency. It could, it could, it could be from a DOT angle, it could be from a municipal plan, it could be from any different entity offering grants to do those kinds of things. Right now, the state has presidential declarations because of all the flooding. And so, all the money that will flow into our state, there's a certain percentage of that that gets set aside for hazard mitigation projects, so that they don't repeat the cycle over and over again. So, that's where hopefully, if we decide to put in for an outdoor warning siren, some of that money will come from.
See, do you think we can get some money? Because that's our full identity, problem in this town is basically getting some of these, those drainage streets, or drains, drains in the streets just don't work, because we get grass on there, or even leaves in the fall, they're flooded up, and then it's going, you know, be a foot deep there every rain. But if we can, it's not going to be real tough, if we do some of this, because like I say, we've already been doing some of it. If we can get some money to help, you know, like before we did a siren, I think our drainage problems are number one concern, then, then maybe a siren before, you know, definitely before any tornado shelters or anything like that, but then just prioritize down.
So, keep in mind that prioritization goes in what's going to save the most lives, and then what's going to save the most property. And so, that's how we would prioritize. And then based on the priorities that you see that I read off earlier, this work kind of that stuff falls in as far as how we prioritize things. And what we would do is put in notice of interest, and just kind of get on the radar statewide, and it's a very competitive process. So, what they'll do is they'll go through the state priority list and pick out projects that are top on their list. And then, as some of those major funds are committed, sometimes then you have funds for smaller projects and you can maybe stand a chance of getting one of those. But the, you know, siren project's pretty straightforward, whereas that project probably is going to require some engineering and some, you know, bid scope from an engineer and some costs attached to it. So, it's, there's a little bit, a little bit to the process, but still, we should identify that, and then we know what's, you know, we know what to pursue. Absolutely. If it's something that's disrupting your community and doing it frequently, you definitely need to get it on our radar.
And there could be, you know, I could call the bad red, you know, it's pretty, you know, it's...
Pretty bad. Because our streets, I mean, it goes in with the streets, that's why I said that we're basically throwing money in there if we don't get the drainage problem fixed before we do anything with the streets, because then it's...
Yeah, and that's kind of these, these few areas, three areas, like I say, I think we fix that one just by finding, you know, just these styrofoams over, you know, the piece of pipe down in the ground, so I mean, just a plug tight, so...
So, then that lends to a conversation about routine inspection, routine cleaning, maintenance, but you're actually correct on if we don't drain our, our city, then our road beds become soft and deteriorate, and then when they freeze in the winter, that's when it really, really gets us.
Yeah, I totally agree, you know, if we can get some help doing this, I mean, that's for our needs, you know, that's kind of a... And personally, I don't know how you get, I don't know how you get better than we were about cleaning the trees and stuff up with the help of the county, I don't know if that's just a fluke or if they would do that every time, but I mean, that's a pretty, we were pretty efficient in getting the streets cleaned off.
That was a whole lot of conversation in management between Mayor and I behind the scenes, and that stuff, it's just my job to do to support the mayor. What we, how we, to answer your question, how we would get better at that, was we'd have to have a formal debris management program that outlines ahead of time exactly where do we take that debris, what do we do with it, and track it from grade to grade, because there are DNR regulations about that kind of thing, and there are things we can and can't do. And I think there's probably opportunity to be a little bit more shoe-minded of that and more efficient, because I think that's a problem, we're going to run into that again, as long as we have stormy trees, that's going to happen. And I feel like every, that's probably an opportunity for every community to work on. We saw a lot of that with Eddie Bill in this past year as well. Yeah, and those are simple planning things, and a lot of that comes back to you folks on making policy decisions, and just helping me, me helping you get educated on what the rules are, what the requirements are, and kind of coordinate that countywide. You know, I also wonder, and just one of the things I wonder is, do we have enough resources in the county to deal with that debris? You know, and the last time we did a re-collection site in the tunnel, we talked about, do we need to rent tub renders and those kinds of things? That's a conversation we can have, that I can have with the commission, to say, is there a county-wide, is there a piece of equipment we need to acquire that all the municipalities share, and we figure out how that works? So, there, that's the beauty of kind of some of these conversations. If we find a common need across all jurisdictions, we can pull together and maybe address that.
Yeah, well, that worked out good, I mean, there was a lot of, a lot of things worked out perfect that day, but I mean, it's just the way...
And that's how it should work. I mean, that's, that's how it worked also when we had the plug on Main Street, and someone was able to come over, that was a few phone calls and...
Without getting rid of that water, there's no way we were going to fix that, so, yeah.
It's just about knowing the resources in your neighbors, right? Sometimes it doesn't cost a lot of money either.
So, you like kind of brought up the mitigation part, so even a plan of taking down X amount of trees, I mean, we've talked about that at city council, I don't know how many times per year to help alleviate some of that from happening, spur of the moment, and oh my gosh, what do we do with all this? I mean, did that be part of...
That would definitely be a mitigation project, yeah.
Tree removal.
Yeah.
My understanding, agency doesn't let any trees be planted in the parking. That doesn't mean they can't fall from the restance out, but it takes a lot of liability off the city, have them in the parking. We've got a root squad a few here for October, I think.
Okay, these trees are, I had public radio on the other day and I was y'all talking about it, I think it's just really hit my whole city now. She said it just brings tears to her eyes to see it, it's just, I can't remember how many of the entries in DNR said cities were going to take care of it, it was in a million.
Well, and you remember, I don't remember how long ago it was, we had the same thing with the elm, the Dutch elm disease. I mean, it seems like every so many years, something goes through like that. And I, and I'm not a forester, so I, but...
It's just, in my mind, it was the time, it just boils down to money. But I like to see them all gone in Blakesburg, y'all, and I know it's in the road use.
And what we're doing, and what we're doing with this plan is just identifying those opportunities and those needs, and getting them on paper, and then it's on our, it's kind of on our radar screen, and then we can look for opportunities for help, or we can look for opportunities to do it when we can, as we can, or communicate expectations to the public. And a lot of times I find in emergency management, a lot of my job is, is a lot of education and communication and managing expectations. If people don't know the right way to respond, then, you know, that creates some sort of chaos and disorder when an emergency happens. If we know plans ahead of time, we know as a community exactly how we're going to respond to these things, makes things a whole lot easier to handle and cheaper and a long time. Because what do we do when we don't have a plan and we respond knee-jerk reaction? We spend unnecessary money. And that's what we're going to try to avoid, our budgets can't handle that. So, moving on, let's look at number seven. Just looking for information about infrastructure, roads, bridges, sewer facilities, and water mains have been damaged since 2012. We maybe got ahead of that conversation a little bit, as we talked about some of our street flooding, looking at cleaning out our ditches and... Did we miss a page?
We got 12.
Always have a backup plan, right? I got you covered. One of the funny ones. You got your event?
I was assigned a task to see concerned.
So, that's just a question, asking if you've had any issues with any infrastructure. So, we talked about roads, we haven't really talked about bridges, are any of your bridges city-owned or...
We just have a one bridge and it's... I think it's ours.
It's ours?
Yeah. I think that's, if I remember right, I'm just quoting on history here, when the railroad, when they allowed them to build the new one, I think they turned it over. I don't know if it was county, city, or city-owned.
I think the way I remember it was, was if the railroad sees something wrong, they send a letter to the city. I will double check that.
Might be something we want to follow up on to make sure we know.
And we have repaired, I mean, I know we've repaired some water mains since I've been in office, even in the last two years, so since 2012, I'm sure we've done...
It sounds like you've been working on leak stop boxes and trying to eliminate some of that water leaving, water and money going down with it. Aid is critical infrastructures in municipality that have been damaged, so we, we look at special populations like care facilities, nursing homes, schools, those kinds of things. And I'll be having this conversation with the school district as well. The next section's a lot easier, because you just get to pick. We're going to go through some common natural disaster events, and you get to rate it, if you think it's a high, medium, or low vulnerability. So, nine, dam failure. Quite a ways from the river, that we're okay. Drought.
Probably medium.
We don't deal with a lot of the crops here in town, it just depends on how worked up to get about your yard, but it's not going to cause a lot of impact maybe to the public budget. However, it could be medium, because, you know, when the soil gets rolled dry and it starts to move and shift, and that can affect the water mains, so...
Could have fire impact.
Yep, could have fire impact. You're thinking right. Earthquake, I know that depends on how real you think the fault is in Missouri. Twelve expansive soils, and that's really just kind of local knowledge, I don't know much about the subsoil around here. Kind of up on a plateau right here in Blakesburg right now. Extreme heat?
Iowa or Tampa.
That's alright. And expansive soil comes into play, like if you were in a community that had some bluffs and cliffs and you're worried about mudslides and those kinds of things, that's kind of what we're, what we're thinking about there. Extreme heat, we've seen some of that recently. Flash flooding, we've seen some of that as well. Sometimes no matter how good our drainage is, we're going to have flooded streets when it rains that, you know, that hard, that fast. There's a landslide question again. River flooding, you're quite a ways from the river, so I think you're good. Severe winter storm? I'd say probably high probability for that. Sinkholes?
Especially with our dump truck, we're here.
Thunderstorm, lightning, and hail. Seems like the last couple of years, Blakesburg's been hit a lot. Just, it just might go on, and tornadoing winds going, storms too.
Part of that's because it's so hot and much higher than everybody else.
Next, there's some questions about what you know about some of the plans in place for your municipality. So, check the boxes of the plans that you're aware of, that you have. Comprehensive plan, so it's like a strategic plan, you know, development plan, land use plan, capital improvement, parks and rec, watershed. Your emergency operation plan is part of a countywide emergency operation plan, so you do have that, you may not have seen it yet, but you're, you're part of that. Your mayor works on that with me on the commission. That's a whole, that's a whole separate night, whole separate topic. But it looks at evacuation plans, economic development plan, transportation plan, then any other plans. So, I talked about a debris management plan, that would be one of those things that we would put in that emergency operation plan, these annexes. Twenty-two asks, which of any of these plans address natural hazards? And which of any of the above plans identify projects to include mitigation strategies of projects? Please describe any hazard mitigation projects included in these plans. What that talks about is if you have, say, a comprehensive plan for the city, I think you brought one up here a little bit ago, where you would include some of those types of projects, and that could be included in a comprehensive plan, a transportation plan, whichever, whatever you were going for in that original plan. That's kind of what it's talking about. That's kind of what it's talking about. And sometimes it gets a little overwhelming, I understand because our budgets are small. But you know, like anything in life, if you take something that seems overwhelming and you break it down into smaller pieces, it's maybe manageable, maybe attainable. And so sometimes that's the benefit of having some of those more comprehensive plans. You can look at a big picture and then break it down into smaller parts and then see how you can kind of chip away at it. Twenty-three asks about which of the following are implemented in jurisdictions as far as codes and ordinances? Just check any of those that apply. And you might have to consult your code vote to really get definitive answers. But some of these may be important as we talk a little more in depth about some of those things we discussed already, like debris management. So it may or may not be okay to burn a debris pile. Once we've collected all that debris, maybe, maybe that's okay, maybe that's not. But there's some things that go into that. Twenty-four asks, when your code of ordinances was updated?
Well, that's an interesting question. We have 20 till 2020. Every five years.
And it's important because, yeah, well, that's, that's the recommendation. We're going through that chili right now, we've not done it since, so it's expensive. And it's $19.92.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so a lot of these things you're talking about, we're dealing with too, like trees and those kinds of things.
We're mainly on state. Basically, good or bad. Don't have any time to talk.
The reason that's important is because some of these things I talk about, like managing expectations and managing policy, that's where they reside. So it's up to you to set policy and put that ordinance so that you have something to enforce. Maybe something like, don't blow your grass in the street? Things like that. And that lends to the next question. Twenty-five, have the above responses of these codes and ordinances adequately administered and enforced? And are they current and up to date? Are there questions or concerns about the effectiveness of these codes and ordinances? Opportunity to identify any concerns you have with that, or opportunities we can work on as a city. Twenty-six asks about the community building permit system? And how many permits have you issued since 2012?
Not a whole lot, nothing till here recently. We kind of rewrote the building code here. That was one of the things we've done in the last year.
Yeah, Trump.
Well, regenerated in country. And demolished or moved. That's what we're trying to get. Plan in place for nuisance, the basement and whatnot.
We're a little bit progress.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven asks, what mitigation related projects and activities have been completed or has begun in the last five years? Can we just find any of the things we've discussed up till now, really? Twenty-eight, what if any ongoing operations you municipality contribute to maintaining and increasing your community's hazard or disaster resilience? A lot of that, in my perspective, is just what we've discussed already is proper policy and education of expectations. And that's something that's easy enough to work on. We can continue to work on those things, doesn't have to cost us a lot of money. That question could also talk about other resources in the community that we may need or have. If you have a city employee, you have some equipment, some trucks that can move debris around, those kinds of things. So you have some resources that's, that's part of that. Maybe it's, maybe this question is a good place to pin there. The question about, do we need a shared resource amongst municipalities to grind up debris? That might be a good spot for that. Next set of questions, just a bunch of boxes. I ask you, who provides those services for your community?
I'm kind of shocked, like in the pages prior, it doesn't like address the water supply. I guess here lately, we've kind of dealt with the water supply issue. And it was amazing, the phone calls in the public that turned to us because we supplied their water. So they were concerned about the water and it came to us, not Raffman. A lot of them called them too. But, you know, a bad tornado takes down our water tower. Not having power for a week and a half takes down our water. That's a pretty big issue with an elderly population who can't get to buy water.
So write that in the question that talks about infrastructure, because that is a very good point.
Even a rap, but I, you know, just a quick look, doesn't matter what you want to say is causing it. There's a genuine fear that the algae problem is going to get much worse over the next few years and it will eventually start affecting drinking water supplies.
Okay, so that's an excellent question, excellent thing to bring up. And for several reasons, I put that under seven, just list that under number seven, or anywhere really, but. So here's where I'll go with that. A lot of what my office is responsible for is helping you communicate critical information, especially emergency information. We have some opportunities and ways to do those kinds of things. For example, if for some reason, Raffman's gives you that heads up to say, hey, we have an issue with the system. Or you have an internal system problem, you have a main break or something, we have to issue a boil order for safety. We need to get that information out to everybody in town. There's, there's some ways to do that. There's some technology we can utilize to do that. So Lord Iowa is a system that we have access to as a county. It's part of a statewide system, so Iowa Homeland Security pays for this alerting platform. And the city of Blakesburg has the opportunity to utilize that as well locally. So I can give your clerk or whoever in the city access rights to that, to send out text messages of that sort. So the city of Blakesburg's entered a boil order. We can craft a message and boom, send it out to everybody that has subscribed for alerts in Blakesburg. That same system, you can opt in to also get National Weather Service alerts, those kinds of things. You can use that system to let us know that you have a special need of some sort. So that if we have an evacuation or we need to go looking for people after a disaster, we can kind of know where to look for search people that are not mobile, those kinds of things. That's a system we really need to expand more upon and utilize better. And it's free. It's absolutely free. And it's something we can expand and it's so easy to do. Put that on your surveys as something to follow up on. Let's expand to talk about. So the website.
I signed up where I can remember the website. It took me about a minute.
So waploready.org is my new website. I launched here earlier this year with the Spark Tank kids at a T M Y school. That was a fun, fun project. The reason for that project actually started because of Lord Iowa, because I wanted something easy to roll off my tongue in a radio interview and a TV interview, it's kind of, or a setting like this. But nothing that was out there worked because the URLs were super long and the tiny URLs I come up with are a bunch of gibberish letters and numbers. I'm like, that doesn't work unless you're clicking along on the internet. That didn't work at all. So I really wanted some simple URL. Well, that blossomed into, you know what, we really just need a website for emergency management that we can put all of these things on. So there really should be a page on the website that addresses those questions you just had about, is the safety of the water supply? Well, you issue a boil order, what's that mean? You know, what is that, what's a boil order entail? All that stuff should be on that website as a resource. And if we build that, then you as a city can say, well, go here to this website and there's all the information.
I think if we would do that, we would definitely have to look at some type of hands-on education in the community. Because they would not have that.
Very few people.
And wouldn't be probably then saying, hey, come on, we're going to show you how to do this. It'd be like, hey, let me show you how to do this.
And it's easy to sign up for and it's something that, actually just two weeks ago, was that Spark Tank again, to develop some materials to figure out the best way to market it, the easiest way to market it, and what that looks like. The kids come up with some great ideas, now we just have to pick a couple and figure out how that works. And, you know, in a city this size, we can do, we can go to door-to-door flyers, we can, I don't know, if you send out water bills or how that works or whatever, we can work on that kind of thing. But it would be so awesome to get some decent coverage through town to get everybody signed up for that. We would come up with a frequency to test it once in a while, and then it's at your disposal. And that's so handy because we can use it for so many things. So we have a storm hit town again. We need to get the message out about, hey, this is going to be our recollection site, here it is. Send that message out. Or we've got, and the nice thing about Lord Iowa is I tell folks on the severe weather, sign up for it because it's tied to your physical address that you register. But then sign up for a news station because it follows you on the mobile. Have both, because everybody's so mobile, everybody works out of town. So it's, I mean, don't you want to know when the storms hit your home when you're off somewhere else? And you know how storms can be weird like that, they just hit small areas. So it really is part of that situation awareness kind of thing. So make a big note about that somewhere, we'll follow up on that. That is an easy win, and that is a no cost win.
What was the website?
Waploready.org. And it is by no means finished, the skeleton is there. Under resources, I really want to have a tab that coincides with all of the emergency support functions and the emergency response plan. That's another topic for another night. I'll educate you on what that means, but that's the perfect, perfect example for what we can do with that.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see, we're almost done. Thirty-seven, names, locations, approximate peak numbers of people, important community services. So this is, that's a fancy way of saying, what are your kind of high-risk facilities that you would have in town? So do you have a senior housing place in town that you worry about? If we would have to evacuate town, I've been there in Blakesburg with anger fire. Or tornado, or any of those kinds of things where it would pose some special, need some special attention. Besides elementary school. And we, and we do a lot of planning with the elementary school already.
We have three manors in town that, that they're not, I mean, they used to be more elderly home town than everybody. I mean, they got a lot of people in there. I mean, we saw, y'all, it's a hundred years old, this is one, I mean, that would be, but those would be our primary, I think, places to try to.
City hall where we are right now.
Yeah.
Well, one of the things that the mayor and I have discussed before, and we've seen this, it's a common practice in Eddyville, is when there's a long duration power outage event, we like to get the word out and what we can do for those people that may be electrically dependent. So say you have some folks in town, and I don't know this answer, this is, this is part of what we need to find out, that rely on electricity for an oxygen generator or something like that. What they do in Eddyville is say, everybody go to the fire station. There's a generator there, plenty of outlets, you can plug in your oxygen generator. We'll put on the TV and just hang out in the, in the room until the power comes on. I'm sure we can do that in Blakesburg too.
That's what we did at the storm the last time there, we had all the trees and that. We had a couple of gals I know went out.
Yeah, Mike and some others.
I know that's a conversation we had on the phone.
Yep, that's what Mike and Brian.
But that's kind of what that question's going for is, we need to think about those people maybe that we don't think about every day and make sure we don't forget them.
There's no storm shelters of any kind for those manors or right here.
It's not really a good place to do anywhere in town. And storm shelters are harder and harder to get funding for, but if you really feel that's something that is a need, put it down, we'll put it, we'll put it on the radar.
This is way out. What kind of a rating EF tornado is it taped to pretty well flatten a framed building?
You know, there's some guides out there and I can get that to you. I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Because that's what we have, stud framed buildings. Everybody says go to the bathroom, but there's a point where that's not going to be, probably do, you know.
Say three or. Three does tremendous damage, I mean, that's right. And you get into a four. I was watching on YouTube the other night that EF5 was a two, oh boy. Went through Oklahoma, that's something to look at.
And probably a particular concern here in Blakesburg is, as you mentioned, we're, we're high up. You know, we're on the plateau, we're kind of the highest point really in all the four counties around, are we not? I have a really cool 3D model of the county sometimes, you want to see that? I had an Iowa State student print me a 3D model of the county so we could look at topography and those kinds of things.
Yeah, a lot of people don't know that, I'm going to sell it again. You got a really nice drum.
I do.
The fire station is a whole building, so, you know, I wish we had something.
Well, pretty much everything is lightweight construction nowadays. You know, the school's probably the remaining fortress in the county, I would say.
Well, that's right. I just couldn't like. Should I say, we were talking to a couple of gentlemen the other day, was there a discussion, there's possibly a grant for maybe some addition on the fire station? And since we're talking tornado stuff, and this, I don't know, something's going to happen here. I think some cities, especially in Oklahoma places on new construction, they, I think it's even in COB, there will be a tornado shelter in that house, i.e. concrete walls, whatever you want to vault, like a big closet you can walk into. If there is any construction over there, do you think there'd be a chance there might be enough extra money that could at least get something beefed up a little bit? I don't know what that would entail or if a major problem, and I'll probably get stopped on the street and we'll talk too for bringing that up, but.
No, I, that's the purpose of this discussion, is to, is to get those, those ideas and those concerns on paper so that we can, we can get it in plan and look at what are the options? And if there's going to be construction or expansion later on, that's the time.
But then the thing is, you know, how do people get there? I've always just been to the theory that, you know, I don't. Most people, number one, are going to ignore tornado warning. I think you know that. And then when it gets, they've got two minutes, maybe when they finally figure out, hey, I better head for COB. So I really don't know.
But that's on them.
Yeah.
It's our job as officials to provide the information, provide the warning, and do what we can to provide some safety. It's on people, it's on, it's on every resident, so we need those warnings.
And that's what you're talking about, down there about people with floods on the river that.
They just rebuild.
They're not leaving, they're not going anywhere, and you know, you guys go and that, then you have to go take some people out of their homes.
Yeah, we still go and do rescues and, and, you know, you can't not do those things. But, but it's, if you look at the amount of risk that's done, the amount of cost, and all that can be prevented with just needing some advice and some warnings and we can only do what we can do, right?
Right.
Right on. But a lot of, a lot of emergency management, again, is that managing information and expectations and providing the best information we can to our public so they can make intelligent, informed decisions.
Dr. O'Shaughnessy, I think the only thing with, do you have a basement near your place?
Yeah.
Okay. Yours and the beer bank over here are probably the only two buildings, you know, in this area that has any kind of a underground.
The one, there's a old bank.
I suppose there is a basement there.
You know, this might be something that is a question we posed to some engineering resources. I've seen drawings where they have specs for fortified buildings, even wood frame, that can withstand a certain amount of wind. Maybe there is some middle road options, you know, maybe we can't afford to do the concrete bunker like we would like, but we have to ask ourselves, is that necessary? You know, we always like to plan for the absolute worst, but can we afford it? And if we can't, what can we afford and what's most common? And so maybe, maybe another thing you should make a note of somewhere, just anywhere in paper, is dig into some of the alternatives, engineering alternatives for households. And then I would love to learn more what the weather service has for stats for this community, just to see what the history has been for wind events and tornadoes and those kinds of things. And I love to make decisions with data, it's a lot easier. Now, that doesn't always predict the future, and we've seen weather patterns change quite drastically in the last couple of decades, and who knows where it'll go, but, but, you know, we don't see EF5 tornadoes all the time. But we do see high wind events quite a lot. And frankly, high wind events and down microbursts and those kinds of things do far, far more widespread damage than tornado does. And probably more frequently. Where are we at? I think we addressed 39 or any with the safelanes. And then 40, do we complain to construct new facilities or infrastructure? I think Gary talked about that one, maybe, maybe if the fire station expands or we look at that, and maybe we talk about that with the fire board and say, hey, what's your intentions? What can we partner on with you as a community to have some sort of place that people can go? You know, for that really, you know, the other conversation you might have in that vein is with the school district too, to see what you can partner with the school.
Is the one building down, the old elementary still pretty sturdy?
What's that?
Did you skip siren?
Did I?
It's part of the show.
Thirty-eight. I didn't mean to skip 38. I didn't mean to skip 38, I was cold on that, thank you for doing that. If I understand correctly, your siren is still an old civil defense siren?
I don't think so.
From the 50s, is it going?
Down on the community building.
Is it still on there? Does it work?
I've never heard.
I wouldn't put my life on it. I didn't know.
So it's safe to say we need one?
Yeah. Yeah, whatever.
Circle that, make sure you put some notes on 38. If, that's one thing I did want to ask you tonight, is if you're interested in doing that, I would love to go ahead and put in that notice of interest now, on behalf of Blakesburg, to see if maybe we can get some funds down the road here with this current presidential declaration. So here's the deal, it's a 15% match. I haven't got bids yet, but just looking at historical spends and it's. I haven't got bids yet, but just looking at historical spends, and it's been some time since H did theirs, but theirs costs in the neighborhood of fifteen thousand. I don't think that included the pole. So my rough guess would be twenty to twenty-five thousand. Do fifteen percent of that, maybe looking at thirty-five hundred dollars is kind of a general idea. Don't hold me to that. I don't have any real bids, but that's just based on history.
Much maintenance involved though. We've talked about it.
Depends on which style. I did learn that coming into it. So Tomwa has one brand that doesn't rotate. Cardinal School Agency in Ediville have the other brand that does rotate, that does require some maintenance. It's not horrible. It's the biggest maintenance with any of them. Doesn't matter what brand it is, is the batteries. And the way they work is that siren actually runs off the battery and the battery is charged by the AC power. So when you lose power, that, that siren still runs. But those batteries are like a deep cycle marine type battery. There's a couple of them in there that have to be, there's a cycle that they have to replace. It's not.
Horrible. Wouldn't be in a shadow.
Yeah, it's, I'd say the benefit is definitely worth.
Do they have any solar applications?
Yes. Yes, they do.
Which I know the sun doesn't shine all the time every day.
Should be enough to turn the banner though. Yep. Yep, absolutely.
You go on it tonight?
What's that?
Do you want to go to look into it tonight? I think I've heard you talk about it before or what do you need to look into, I guess?
I just need your blessing to pursue with it.
You have my blessing. You have my blessing. I don't know about the other.
I'll, I'll take care of the Heather part for you. I'll take care of that. It's a pretty simple deal. All the grants you manage online, all I do is, I will ask a vendor to come to your community and look things oversize, give us a recommendation and a bid. We'll look into the solar option and just give us some options on cost. I go online and fill out a simple document and upload the bid and I'm going to wait. That's all there is really is to. I think we're silly not to ask.
I think we can look into it. I mean.
Don't hurt to look into it, absolutely. And then.
Doesn't mean you have to say yes.
Right. And then if it comes back and they want to, then we go before the council and they have the opportunity to say, yeah, your name.
You answered my question on maintenance and that was probably one of my biggest, what I was wondering about.
And we can talk more in depth on that later too, about some of the experience that we've had with it. Things evolve. You know, the solar options have a new thing. There's other options now that none of the sirens in the county currently have on feedback. So when we test the sirens, we really truly don't know they're working until some, unless somebody's sitting underneath it listening. And then how do you really know it works in the event? It'd be nice to have that updated technology that gives the signal back that tells the console, hey, I did activate. There's just, things evolve as the technology improves.
This is totally off the wall, but I've looked at it a long time. I've seen a couple of kind of odd things with our railroad. Is there anything to tie in with the railroad companies? I mean, I know there's some pretty bizarre things that are shipped across our rails every day that go right through our neighborhood. Granted, a lot of those would probably, if they derailed, would result in evacuation. But, I mean, is there any responsibility, like maybe we can help have the railroad, you know what I mean? Like, have you ever heard of anything like that?
It's not bizarre at all. So what I would say about that is the railroad does offer a lot of training in that regard as far as educating you about the rail, what they do ship, when would we evacuate, what's that process look like? How does that all work? There's, if you're interested, there's a class coming up soon that I can get the information to you to forward out on Amtrak. Now, that doesn't apply to you because you're not on that track, however. Some of the, some of the key information is still the same as far as rail traffic and relation to what terrorists want to do to us.
I'm more worried about some chemicals going across our territory through our neighborhood.
It all goes back to that see something, say something. So if something doesn't look right, smell right, seem right, sound right, ask. And then you're going to ask, well, ask who? And so those are things we can have conversation about. What are those processes and what are the notifications? You know, my phone's always on. Sheriff's office always answers the phone. They've got questions. They'll forward it out to some of us, but never, never be afraid to ask the question that is on your mind. And we can cer, I can certainly arrange for some more in-depth training on railroad to help ease your mind as an elected official because you get those questions from the public. I get some of that information in my office just through the hazmat planning. So every year through EPA requirements, like fixed facilities are required to report to me what they have for chemicals on site. Now, the transportation's a different side of it. We do some planning for that as well and we do some planning for evacuations and evacuation distances and areas of concern and things like that. That's on the response plan and absolutely I can share that with you sometime. All very good questions. Nothing's off the wall. Nothing's out of bounds. That's the, this is the, this is the benefit to me and to all of you to have these conversations and kind of get all this on paper. I hope all of you wrote some notes about all the things you mentioned to me. And if you want to, I'll hang around. If you want to finish filling out the front page with your contact information, I can wait and collect that and anything else that's on your mind, just flip over and write in a blank spot. Any follow-up, like some of that training information. Thank you for taking the time and I know that took a little while, but I think it will pay some dividends.
Thank you for coming down and sharing this with us.
It's my number one job to support all of you, our elected officials, in helping you execute some of these, some of these projects. Any questions from the public? Hello again.
You know Larry?
Yeah, we got Chad this morning. We're killing bugs this morning. All right. So Tim, thanks again. For, we'll get these to you before, before we get out of here tonight then. So I will move on to any public comment?
Hang on. I think there's kind of some public comment that come in via telephone.
Yeah. Just tonight I had complaints. A truck driver I know that drives through here all home off of the county busted off the CB and, and another one of his drivers broke off a smoke stack on the trees, mainly the trees on this street. And he brought it to my attention that they're supposed to be trimmed to fourteen feet, just same as the power on. But it's actually these bushy trees right along State Street that run from here to the, to the bridge. There's actually a dead tree with some big limbs up by the bridge, but he was wondering if we could trim them up. They're basically trimmed at the bottom, but they're not a pine high for the trees of, you know, grew out where they're lower, but basically we need to trim straight up and, and.
Something we can do ourselves, something we can do ourselves.
I think so, yeah.
I was saying, most of those are on the parking, those ornamental trees I think you're talking about.
Yeah, but I, I drove down there and they're like ten foot high and then they come out. Basically there's trucks that are all riding in the middle of the road, but one two of them eat. They didn't start breaking. So he said there's a few down County Street too. He said they've been home a lot through here, you know, for the counties and, and they had some other towns that basically wouldn't.
Wouldn't get that on.
If someone's too big, we don't think we can do it. Yeah, we're trying to get somebody to come in, but.
That's right. Maybe we ought to think about planting trees in the parking from here on out, you know.
Well, I'm not, you know, a lot of these city trees that we've got to take down, you know, I wish we were never planted. Between sidewalk and the street, my opinion, there's no place for a tree there.
And I was going to say, we have to do it going forward because the ones are there, there. Might save some headaches down the road for setting stamps.
I don't think anybody on the city council has done it for years, you know, planted any like that, but I know we've had to take down a bunch of them lately, so.
A lot of those void trees, different alliance clubs and a lot of them.
That's what I was told a long time, a long time ago that they planted a lot of them along those sides of the street.
You're talking the ornamental ones.
And they aren't pretty, darn it.
They just need to get taller. That's what, that's the basic thing with them either.
Most of those people are gone now. The plant, about all.
And I don't, them trees are more bad if you just take, because right now they just go up and come trining around basically.
It's a nice job to do them off eventually.
Basically we wouldn't get the height of them up to where.
They can get through.
They're, they're a pain, but the county engineer, I never checked into that. That one time I talked to him, he said the reason you'll see a lot of trees planted along the side of a lot of streets, a lot of towns, he said it'll psychologically slow people down because they think you're going out of tighter space. I haven't checked into it, but apparently it works most of the time. And he said that's the reason you'll see a lot of that, just feel, what you're feeling in tighter space.
It's kind of a drag.
I'm sure some guy with claustrophobia will speak up and get out of there, so.
That's something we can try to take a look at.
Can, can we reach it with a pole saw?
Yeah, a pole saw. We're having a pole saw.
Maybe stand in the back of the dump truck. Maybe that'll work. Sure, if we can get a fire truck, you know, if we need to be on top of the fire truck.
Is that just a, it's not just.
There's gas power.
Well, we figured we'd get our money for that.
I'm just wondering if we got to turn Larry loose for this.
I think we can, you know, have our, turn this all out there and dump it there.
I think it'll work with this.
Definitely. I drove down, I totally see, yeah, even any tall truck pickup, you know, is going to hit.
I think Eric's complained to me about that before too, every once in a while.
Right on. Well, yep, we're definitely looking to get something done there for sure. All right. Any other public comment? We will move on. Business. Not really streets, but discussing a project on South Street. I think Jerry talked to Chad and he's agreed that if we go forward with that to allow us to make payments, correct?
Yeah.
On that. So we definitely feel that that's something that we, we need to get done as soon as possible. I know he's busy.
Which him and Light, Light are both are supposed to get down this week.
The Light would look at it at least and see if they're interested.
I'll give him a those, I'll call Mike tomorrow to, rather than.
No, I think we should get you a bit.
Yeah, I'll give Mike a call, have him come down and look at it. If we get a hold of Chad, Jerry, then we'll be in business. We got to go down there, so.
After the fall festival, we might as well dig in, get that done.
We were told, what was his exact words? I went and put it off. That's what he said to me.
County engineer. Yep. So that was all. Just wanted to kind of touch on that. Everybody's good. We'll move on to new business. We have an appointee to the Blakesburg Public Library. They needed somebody from the county for this seat. The way this will work is we will approve her and then it will move on to the county supervisors to also agree since it's a, one of the county representatives. I believe they have two county representatives in three cities. Is that correct? Yep. So they've been running with just one county representative for a while. I recommend that we appoint Teresa DeWitt to the Blakesburg Public Library. Entertaining motion.
I'll make the motion. We've appointed Teresa DeWitt to the line very hard. Motion by Chisman?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jerry Van Dorn. All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. That was just a motion, correct? No resolution there? Okay, now we will move on to the resolution. Resolution nineteen dot nine dot nine dot one, transfer twenty-seven hundred seventy-five dollars from local option sales tax to general fund. I'll take a motion to approve this resolution.
I make a motion to approve resolution nineteen dot nine dot nine dot one.
Motion by Coke?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chisman. Roll call, vote Chisman.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jerry Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coke?
Aye.
Kimberly Van Dorn?
Aye.
All ayes. Has everything all worked right? Okay. Resolution nineteen dot nine dot nine dot two, public hearing for selling the property at three-ten to three-twelve Hickory. Says the property down by the ballpark, Bob gave back to the city. We're going to set a public hearing to sell it again. We'd like to have that public hearing if it works for everybody on September twenty-third. If that works for everybody, September twenty-third at seven PM here for the public hearing, I will take a motion to approve resolution nineteen dot nine dot nine dot two.
Don't make a motion that we approve nineteen dot nine dot nine dot two. They have a public hearing on September twenty-third.
Motion by Chisman?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Coke. Roll call. Chisman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jerry Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coke?
Aye.
Kimberly Van Dorn?
Aye.
All right, this is kind of a discussion topic here. Last year we did a fall cleanup day. The guys at the fire department worked with us on that. We just brought in two dumpsters. Just wondering if there's any interest in doing that again. I know this year we did summer cleanup. We had some, some issues with people trying to bring down and dump stuff that we had told them repeatedly not to dump in there. So I guess I'm just kind of feeling out that we do have the money to provide this service, but just kind of want to know what, what you guys think about that. Go ahead.
Well, I guess kind of, I mean, we're going to have people get rid of the stuff that they're not supposed to unless we put guards up there, which I think we've done before. That's always going to be an issue. I would almost say table it until spring, kind of pool the money and have a trailer there for some of that stuff that we can't afford, like the tires to take where they need to go. We can't afford them to take the appliances and have, it doesn't need a sponsor for those places. People need to get rid of them also. I mean, they're probably harder to get rid of than the bag of garbage sitting in your basement.
Really hard to get rid of.
I, I would propose something like that. I mean, at least get the fall cleanup and pool the money to do a better.
A better spring cleanup?
Thoughts, guys?
I like that. I like it. I thought it was pretty expensive to do tires.
Tires and I'll check into it some more. There's a large company nationwide whose name I cannot think of right now. They're on the internet. They recycle tires like you can't believe. I think there can even be a deal probably cut with them. I know they're out of the morning where they probably would just bring a dumpster and goodbye. And it might not cost us anything. It's something to look into. I think they probably will. They're the ones who pick up all the tires at shops and stuff too.
I think we, I, I still see a lot of crap laying around houses and yards. I don't think we had much problem at the fire station last fall because it is at the fire station. People may think there's a camera up or being watched. We didn't really have a problem there. It's pretty clean. I still like the idea of doing two dumpsters there. We can still see about the tires and the stuff in the spring.
Because if we decide we want to do that, we can bend the budget and just maybe try to.
You know, I still think there's a need for it. I mean, if a city can afford it.
That'd be our next thing, Diana. What do we say? I think we can do it. Last year when we did the two dumpsters, it was like seven hundred and twenty dollars.
If we do, we need to watch them. They did in the past. We need somebody there, whether we take turns.
Say just camming? You set a camera up somewhere.
Because we're not going to stop them. It's not going to stop them. It's going to be there.
Well, then we'll just, I don't know. We have passwords on the phone?
I don't. It was pretty good last year, I thought, in the fall. I mean, that's different. This year we had, I don't know. That, it goes both ways. I know one of the kids that threw tires up there probably could say he didn't know he couldn't. We didn't have a written sign up there.
And maybe that's on, maybe I need to have the sign printed.
How much time are we going to have? I'll, I'll give them the horn tomorrow since I'm the lazy guy that doesn't have nothing else to do. I'll call that company up. If we can get a dumpster specifically for tires in there, that'll solve that problem. As far as I'm concerned, everybody in town can just pitch everything. I, I got ten. So there, I'll just haul them down if I have to, but I'll see if I can get a tire dumpster in there.
All their metals way out in West End will take appliances. I don't think they'll take TVs or electronics or any of that stuff, but. I don't think they'll take TVs or electronics or any of that stuff, but...
Much as it pains people, Jason, there's the mayor. TV's gonna cost you anywhere between ten and thirty dollars to take down, just take it right to the recycling center, pay the people and so on. It's a hundred dollars per ton, I believe, after that.
But if you watch, sometimes they'll have those free days...
That's the days to do.
That you can bring those TVs and appliances and all that stuff in, so...
Bring that to the TV and what we're doing?
Yeah, but I mean, the community is not gonna do that overall.
Be nice if we just get an appliance pickup, like, once every quarter, and I know it's gonna make them mad, but I mean, if you got a TV and we get appliance pickup in here, and you gotta come up to city hall and get a ten or twenty dollar tag or whatever, put on it to get rid of it. As far as I'm concerned, it's cheap price, but...
I took appliances down to alter, and I, it's like ten bucks a piece, you get out and water in a dryer, that's, that's better than paying the other people.
You get your gas price out, but I call it a win.
If you got a refrigerator that works, call line, and they'll give you fifty bucks.
Yeah.
They'll come pick it up and haul it off. And they'll do the same with the window air conditioner, too, if they gotta work, it's twenty-five on a window unit. I've used them twice, and it's just really fun, and they pull the big truck up, two strong guys, and it's gone, they give you a check.
Freezers, too.
Maybe a little bit of it does go back to what Jason said, the education of telling people, okay, this is where we're gonna take this, and where you're in, take that. You're always gonna have somebody that's gonna throw something in that they're not supposed to, that's just a...
Well, really, the years before, we haven't had a problem. And this year, I pretty much know, you know, the kids that threw most of the tires, because I know I've seen the exacting tires sitting around, uh, in an alley.
We didn't get fined for that either, I mean, right, I mean, it was...
We had, he let me take them out.
Take them out, yeah.
He basically called me and had them come get them.
There's another question, if I can't get a freebie, since we're talking tires, are they that big of a problem in town? Maybe. Would the city wanna look at, maybe, okay, a hundred dollars a ton, say we get two ton of tires in a dumpster, just a specific tire dumpster, we pay two hundred bucks to get them the hell out of town? Would that work? And I'm almost sure it was a hundred dollars a ton, I looked, I'll have a check.
Recycled?
That was the recycling center, all we'd have to do is get the dumpster down there, and I assume they just weigh it, and they'll charge it. Is it worth it to us to do it? Want to spend some money toward that? I'm still hopeful I can get the freebie, but...
Why don't we check on the freebie thing, if not, maybe that's what we need to do at this point?
That way, if we get tough on an ordinance about tires, and I don't know where any of this wearing me out, that way, we can always say, look, we give everybody the chance to get rid of the things, I'll run it.
I would say, I guess I make a motion, I can go ahead and do it, get two dumpsters, put them up here, we can check into the tires, as far as I'm concerned, we can...
We could do that at a different date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, 'cause you wanna make sure people take advantage of it and bring them in, they're just not being lazy, don't bring them in. On the other hand, I don't really wanna have to pick them up, people leave. But, no, I mean, as far as the date, I don't know.
Shoot, last year was the middle of October. I overplayed at Penn State, I knew that, and it was about my anniversary, 'cause we went out of town, we washed up and, I remember like that, but whatever date that was.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good deal, I mean, if we can afford it, other towns don't even do it anymore, but it helps, 'cause I know, I seen a big difference over this last spring.
I know Ed Eagle did, Ed Eagle did do one here this year, too, so, I mean, I know they're gonna, so, you know, something that they did as well.
We're trying to clean up town, this is, gives a long list to it.
I think not advertising help, too.
Yeah.
'Cause I think, I think in previous years, very bad, people come inside of town.
If we can just put something in the water thing again, and say, we're gonna do this date, uh, everybody get the water bill. If we can put in two water bills for sure before we do it, maybe it'd be better than one.
We could even get in there early November, I don't think that would hurt us.
Do you think we could write something about no tires and appliances in, like, the water bill?
I think we did last time, didn't we?
I did in my newsletter, so anybody that got a water bill, got the newsletter, too, so they just kinda blew it off. So, I just...
I can't believe more than one or two people probably didn't.
We'll just put a big old sign up down there that says, no tires, no appliances, and we can get something like that done up, I can...
Actually, that's involved crap.
If we wanted to, one or two, I suppose, we'd be like, so...
So I think we have a motion on the table from Jerry to go forward with the fall cleanup day.
I'll second that.
Second from Coke, all in favor?
Aye.
So we will, we will move forward, let's just plan on setting the date at our October meeting, so then we can figure out either a couple weeks after that or something.
Or how... I think we'll have to set a date now, so we get in a couple letters.
I think so, too, yeah.
A couple water bills. I don't want sure, like, we...
Yeah, I mean, we're, if you figure somewhere and made up...
You guys pick a date, I'll make a...
Well, I need to talk to the fire department, make sure they're okay with this, so let's do this.
We got a public hearing?
We got a public hearing on the twenty-third. Let's add that to the, to setting the date on the twenty-third, I'll talk to them, find out what dates works for them, get ahold of you, and then we'll go forward from there, we'll just put it on the public hearing.
Okay, and I'll talk to this guy now, and kinda set him up for middle of...
Middle of October.
To hit two, to hit two water bills, what, when would we have to?
You have to be in November.
Yeah.
You could do a water bill on the latter.
Yeah, we can send another letter out.
We had Tim set up on everybody's phone, you just texted out, Tim.
That may not qualify.
I don't think the eighteenth and nineteenth to the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, we want either one of those dates, we wanna shoot for that.
Anytime works for us.
And I'll get ahold of Jim tomorrow.
I think the eighteenth and nineteenth would probably be...
I agree.
Okay.
Probably be the best. I know, I know we don't normally get into real cold weather, but I know I went to a wedding last year in early October, and it was cold.
Yeah, I remember that, too. Okay, so...
You'll check on them dates.
I'll check on them dates with the fire department, the eighteenth and nineteenth, we'll shoot for that, make sure that that'll work for them, and then we'll, we'll approve it, hopefully it's public hearing here, so... Okay, uh, had a discussion about keeping the truck and tractor repair record, 'cause we really haven't in the past. I don't think anybody, so to speak, in the past, the administration and whatnot, have ever kept a really good, uh, record. Uh, Bob brought this to our attention earlier this week. Ina has gathered, based on the information I think that we have on maintenance on the vehicles, right, and the tractor?
Since I started and then I pulled out one twenty-sixteen.
So, I guess, well, uh, Bob just wanted us to kinda have something in a centrally located place. The more I think about it, the more I think probably just have Larry get all that stuff and information to him, how do you keep it back in the shop somewhere?
We got a folder out there now.
Got a folder out there now, but just make sure that we keep everything where it can be found, and I know the tractor, I think, is what we were discussing. Just kinda maybe doing some routine maintenance on it, changing the oil and whatnot, 'cause it hasn't been done in a while, so...
Yeah, I think we ought to try and, you know, we have tremendous amount of turnover in all positions, we need to figure out some way so that we know, whether Ina lets us know, or we turn in mileage, or date, or something, so... And, I mean, I've got egg on my face, because I know when that tractor went to Belzer's, it'd be worked on, and it's...
Through your ears.
I don't know if we have to decide on anything tonight particularly, but we need to get some way so we're taking care of the taxpayers' asking.
Tractor needs to be changed at least in once a year, you know?
I was thinking just set a maintenance schedule up, I know, I get mine, it gave this, they just put a sticker on the window, you know, just, this is within, say, a two-week period, that's when they always change, whether it's once a year or whatever, or...
Well, like, when I was in the military, all that aviation stuff, you gotta, you gotta do so many days or whatever, we had a logbook.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, I was gonna go one step further and say, we keep like a logbook so we know what's done to...
And, but we did, we did, not just for, you know, uh, stuff that we were taking care of, but even our tools, you had to account for your tools every day, and you had to sign off on it. And then if tools got lost, and you, you had to find them.
Yeah.
I mean, they, it wasn't just, you know, oh, well, we need a new one, 'cause you didn't know whether it was in a jet or whatever.
Yeah, I think a four-foot piper, and I'm hoping I find back here somewhere. A four-foot piper in Fred Blackman, I'm hoping it fills up back here.
I'm just gonna tell you, that's hard to lose, Jerry.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's probably, it's probably a grain out there.
It could be somewhere, I'll get my memory thinking about it.
Sounds like we'll look into the, this, the maintenance schedule or something together.
Something that works, not too complicated, just like I said, we need to take good care of the taxpayers' equipment, because...
I mean, and we can go back and look, you know, we do go back and look at bills of when something got done, what got done, we just might need to make it a little bit easier, probably.
From here going forward, and if you ever do sell it, you can say, here's what we did and planned.
We had to fix all this junk on it, is that what you want? Well, I need to kind of go on Ace's route, I mean, I think, and even Bob's, safety, I mean, I think there has to be something, first of all, to make sure Larry's safe and is not, that he's, that he's gonna get hurt on, or the brakes are going bad, and...
It actually...
What?
I meant greater.
Cheesy? Twenty-four?
Seventy-eight hundred dollars.
It actually wasn't safe to drive when it went to Belzer's.
See, and I think that's something we have...
It's not only our driver, it's, you know, if you run into the public, or you got liability, and all kinds of issues there.
We need to send thank you cards to those mower guys for both of us.
Yes, you know, that's a good idea.
Was that the county?
Yeah, yeah.
Put the aculation down there, keep everything stirred up and all that.
Okay, we'll get back on track here a little bit. The last thing we brought up was lighting and, or trying to cut our, maybe save a little money, uh, something else that Bob come up when we discussed. Does possibly getting the lights on the front of city hall, there's some times that they get left on, uh, possibly looking into a motion sensor or a sensor light, that's not on all the time. Ina did print off all the electric bills for the last year that the city's spent on electricity. City hall looks like about three thousand, thirty-one hundred, uh, over the course of the year. The biggest user on that is, of course, the streetlights. I don't know if we've cut any costs, I know a lot of light bulbs on the streetlights now are LED, they've all been switched out, I believe, correct?
Uh, I don't know, I just remember, anybody in any city, the first thing, one of the first things we heard when we went to the first league meeting is, if you don't have LED bulbs on those lights, yeah, ours, it'll save you so much money, you can't believe it.
I heard by the same amount, huh?
They do.
I've been through that with them.
After the meeting, I'm gonna visit with you about something. You mentioned Orion, we've been...
Orion's not my favorite topic.
No, we've been kicking something around, but we don't know if we're ever gonna be able to do it.
I mean, is it enough of a, well, obviously, it costs enough of the light fixtures, I mean...
Well, I guess the way I'm looking at it, we're looking at a big increase coming down the pipeline.
I can give you the cost on the three bulbs, yeah.
But what I'm getting at...
To me, it's minimal.
I understand, but if we do something now, those savings should go out in the future. I mean, there's gonna be a time for it to pay out. Another thing is, several times a light's been left on in the shop. I know not all recently, but in the past, I, you know, you gotta hunt somebody, what about looking at some kind of a motion thing, or so long after the person leaves, it shuts them off?
What, uh...
Let's just see what it costs, or we...
Well, on the three bulbs, I'll run some numbers by you. I ran it the other day, I figured on thirteen cents a kilowatt hour, and I only figured two, I forgot the other one's out there. Basically, it's running us point zero two six cents a day to have them on twenty-four hours. Uh, runs to about, on two of them, just between twenty, twenty-two dollars a year. If somebody wants me to, give me the go-ahead, I want reimbursed, uh, there's bulbs at Menards with sensors in them that are six dollars and fifty cents a piece, we can change them out. But it's gonna cost the city eighteen dollars, so that'd be the cost of basically a year to have them on all day, so...
So, basically, what you're saying, after a year, we should save all the money?
Unless we have to buy new ones.
We'd save four dollars, and I guess where I'm gonna come from with, uh, there's a lot of places we need to be saving money besides a damn light bulb, and I guess I'll just phrase it that way.
Jerry? Jerry, you got something to say?
Um, Gil Harder has a sensor light bulb on his garage down there, and that thing has gone off and on all the time, because...
That's because of the tree they have surrounded.
Well, a bunny runs by it, it goes on.
Maybe a timer would be a better solution.
Well, but then again, do you spend, I don't know, I'll just pick a number, you spend two hundred dollars to save nothing? I mean, I'll be dead and gone.
Forget it, folks, forget it.
Okay.
Maybe we can talk to Orion about them coming in and putting in some more energy.
I'd like to change to a Mid-American franchise, is what I'd like, but I don't think it's, well, state.
Uh, I'm ready if you guys are ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion by Jerry.
Motion by Kimberly Van Dorn?
I'll second it.
Second by Chisman, all in favor?
Aye.
That's around.
And that's what I was gonna talk to you about, because...